I'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight, Council? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of amendments of the May 10th, 2021 council meeting. Approval of May 14th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $121,804.68. Approval of general obligation debt in the amount of $1,154,851.25. Approval of state revolving fund debt in the amount of $424,287.50. Consent of park use permit, KMCD, Lee Munce retirement. Acceptance of library board minutes. Resolution approving employment in the police department. Approval of liquor license for Shokai. Casey's General Store, number 3327 South. BPO Elks Lodge, number 1192. Approval of claims in the amount of $217,483.37. There were no claims more than $75,000.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any discussion or questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, under public forum and appearances, the first one is regarding the Greater Jefferson County Fair. Is Samantha here tonight? Doesn't look like it. So I think this is pretty much the same route as usual, right?
I believe so, correct.
That's what I recall. So, any questions, Council? Do you want to make a motion to approve that? They started the high school-
We approve the parade route for the Justice County Fair for 2021.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, say nay. Okay. Motion carried. Okay. Next is blocking parking spaces. Nicole with Rolling Cravings Food Truck, is she here?
Apparently she has not made it either.
Okay.
What she's requesting is every Wednesday is to utilize part of the public parking around the center square to put their food truck on to serve food there. So the-
During the farmer's market?
No, during lunchtime. From like 11:00 to 2:00 or something like that. I think it's every Wednesday.
On Wednesdays.
She put all their food on it.
Every Wednesday.
Adjust council.
Just on Wednesdays?
So we're looking at other cities to see what they do with public parking and allowing people to use vendor trucks in those areas. We're still doing some research. We're okay with maybe approving this for a month. And then so we have a little bit of time to come up with a plan as far as, because we're, we do believe that there's going to be more than just this one. And if we allow it in our public parking, we're, you know, it's going to eventually probably, if we get too many, it's going to cause a problem. So-
Normally I do this in conjunction with some kind of event going on.
Correct. But they've had, they've had good success. They've, they've been in a couple of private parking lots in town and have been doing very well. So they want to try it up on the square, which we're not, we're not, the city is not opposed to it, but I think we need to look at a process and our approval process for the future. So I would, we recommend go ahead and approve this, but approve it for a month's time. And we'll come back with a proposal for handling this in the future prior to that month.
None of the businesses have, none of the businesses have objected to spots being blocked?
They probably don't know yet. They probably aren't aware of it.
Wouldn't we want them on, on the square side versus right in front of the old Georges, which is what I understood?
I think they'd want on the square side, it sounds like to me.
Yeah, I think they want across the street from the Georges.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you're right.
In the center square, not-
Yep. Yeah.
Outside, or yeah, not the outside square, the inside.
Yep.
So it's accessible from the park.
Yes.
Are they, are they paying any fee to the city for using the city parking?
No. The only thing they're using right now, or they have right now is a peddler's permit.
So you are suggesting we have a month to evaluate the use of the city parking?
Through June, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and have a permit process for utilizing public parking.
I've read a couple of the permits other cities have, and one contingency or one, one rule is they have to stay a certain distance from brick and mortar restaurants. And yeah, and some of them do month to month, some of them do a season fee. It's not unlike what we do at the outdoor dining on sidewalks. They have to pay that fee every year. The business has to pay it every year that they do it. And I can't remember, how many parking spaces does this truck and trailer take? It's like four spaces, isn't it?
I was going to say eight, but I don't know if it's right.
Eight, Scott says.
Yeah. So that's, that's a lot.
Quite a few.
And if we had two or three that size, it would be a lot.
Yep. So then maybe you have to-
Well, two would be 16.
Yeah.
In that case, you might have to, they have to pick different days that they're allowed to be out there, so they're not-
You could rotate.
Yeah, they're not all there at the same time.
Where do they normally set up?
Uh, right next to the Summit Pharmacy to the west is where they, I've seen them a lot. I don't recall, I think they've been somewhere else too, but I don't remember. I think they've been at the Dewdrop outside of town and a few other places. Dollar General parking lot. Well, that was-
Was that the same?
Was that the same one, or was that the Mexican taco?
Well, that one, that one, they were, people complained about the generator that was being run,
making noise. They don't have such an operation here.
They would.
They quiet?
They have to have a generator to run, so I don't know how loud it is. We haven't had any complaints on it, as far as I'm aware.
I just know the one in front of Dollar General, there were people complaining to me about it.
I'm not aware of that.
I'll give you a little bit of information. They've got a generator in the back of their truck, actually two. They're very quiet. They've been at Summit, they've been at Dollar General, they've been at True Value. Obviously, they used to have the restaurant in town. They were very successful. They want to continue that. They don't want it every day, you know, once a week. Michael's put tables up on the square for that type of thing. And if we're going to utilize them, you know, I, I thought it was a good idea for them to come and, you know, propose this and give them that other option for people to explore in the way of food over the lunch hour. I know Nikki wanted to be here tonight. They're actually in Kiasaku tonight, or they were in Kiasaku with the truck today and they got done at seven, so I'm guessing she may even still be here yet tonight, if you have more questions, but.
Okay, so the suggestion is to give approval through June 30th, see how it goes, and while we do a little more research.
Yes, I make the motion to allow them to use the spot from 11:00 to 2:00 on Wednesdays in the month of June.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Tohill. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center Summer Sun Series Street Closures. Lindsay, are you going to talk about that?
Yeah, sure. So we've got a series of six concerts planned. They're free to the public. They're outside. We thought that was a good way to ease back into having concerts safely and having people out and enjoying music again. We're just talking about closing the street right in front of the building, basically just that block. I believe we've asked for it from, starting at noon that day until, you know, I'm going to say 10 o'clock, but then you'll probably look and I'll be wrong. So sometime around in that, in that timeframe, it's likely that we'll be able to open it up or sooner than that, it's likely that we won't have to close it quite as early. But we want it to be safe when we ask for the parameters. And now that I'm, I'm seeing some of the other things on here, I also want to ask, is it also necessary for me to ask for a noise exemption as we will be having the concerts outside? They'll be done by, before 9:00 PM. I just, I don't know what your code is. I'm, I'm so sorry.
These are all Wednesdays, correct?
That's correct. Every other Wednesday night, from June 2nd to August 11th.
That would, seems to me like you would want to include that, don't you think?
Yeah.
Just in case.
Yeah, 10 o'clock on a Friday or Saturday is perceived differently than 10 o'clock on a Wednesday, so I would, I would say you'd want it.
And the noise will be done between 8:30 and 9:00. We'll just be bringing stuff back inside, equipment and all that, until about 10:00.
Any questions, Council? Any additional questions?
We're closing the street at 7:00 until 10:00. What'd you say noon about?
Noon is when we would want to start closing the streets so that we can get our equipment out there and get set up.
Same day.
Yep.
Really, it's noon to 10:00, you want to close the streets, not 7:00 to 10:00.
That's correct.
This is not going to interfere with the food truck situation, is it?
That's on a different square, part of the city.
Yeah, walk away.
This is in the evening. What they set up at noon?
How is that going to affect the courthouse on Wednesdays? Because what kind of traffic do they have on Wednesdays?
Can't answer that, but you're, there's, the courthouse still has access on three different sides, and they have the, we could probably set the barricade up to the south entrance, to the south of that entrance to the, that the drive-in of their parking lot to the nor, on the north side of that building.
That's exactly what we were thinking as well.
So then you can allow access there too. So I, minimal.
It's the one day of the week that there's not court service.
Oh, that's even better.
There you go. Perfect.
I would love to tell you that I knew that and planned it, but it's just luck.
Pretend.
Take that.
And this street has been blocked off before. I remember when the streetscape, when the Central Park was being completely repaved, live on a square, moved to this location and blocked off the street. And then Fair Fest for three years, I think, used this location, so.
They also block it off for the-
Tractor, farm and tractor shows.
Yeah, farm and tractor show.
Not against blocking at all.
Lindsay, what, what equipment? Are you going to have a stage?
Mm-hmm.
And table and chairs, or just, we're supposed to bring our own lawn chairs, right?
Yeah, we're asking people to bring their own lawn chairs. That way people can be in charge of their own social distancing and, and set up in their pods as they wish. We're just setting up stage and sound equipment and some minimal lighting as well.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the street closure.
Thank you. Moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those both same sign? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. We will move to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. First resolution is consideration to remove no parking signature signage, excuse me, on the south side of West Depot Avenue in the 600 and 800 blocks. And I understand Safety Committee discussed this. This was a request by Darrell, head of Street Departments. Anybody want to discuss?
Why don't you talk about it, Martha?
Um, okay. So, yeah, Darrell brought this to public safety. In this area, there is no parking on both sides of the street. And that was due to the foundry traffic from years ago, and no parking on both sides is no longer necessary. The, there is several apartment buildings in this section as well that is, they're currently using the right-of-way for the parking, and so we'd like to open up one side of the street for parking by removing the no parking. The right-of-way, I believe that Scott has notified the property owner that they need to be cleaning up and reshaping their right-of-way. Once this is done and the tenants have another place to park.
Thank you.
So I make the motion to allow the removal of no parking signage on the south side of West Depot as, in the 600 and 800 blocks.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
The next matter is we are going to open a public hearing on the fiscal year 21 budget amendment, but Rebecca, do you want to just quickly go over that, and then we'll open the public hearing?
Okay. Jason, if you could open the resolution, the consideration of fiscal year budget amendment. Thank you. And scroll down just a bit, down towards the bottom is most of the explanation. So the revenues increased a bit due to the CARES Act funding. It was just unbudgeted, much like the radios that were purchased for both the fire and the police departments. We also purchased property on West Briggs, and we purchased a fire truck a year ahead of schedule. So that was all unbudgeted items.
Great, thank you. So I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding this change in budget? Doesn't look like it. If not, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the resolution and request a motion to approve. Unless you have questions.
Motion to approve resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Gandy, second by Flornoy.
One question.
Okay.
Looks like our ending fund balance was a little lower after the amendment. They're at the bottom.
Correct.
So about 400 some thousand lower.
Yes.
We're okay with that. Because it's expenses that we would have incurred in future years.
Yeah.
Anyway. Okay. That's my only question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen? Pam?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. The next tested, we're going to open a public hearing, just a sec, regarding accepting the completion of the gift of Petrus Park. John, do you want to just update us a little bit before we open the public hearing?
I think you all have in your package a deed. This is all right after the budget amendment that you just looked at. And the warranted deed was signed by the Greater Jefferson County Foundation end of last week. We're not recording it until you accept it, subject to the things that are said in your resolution. And the resolution is intended to make sure that what you're accepting has nothing outstanding against it. And, and so it assumes there's no encumbrances, assumes that you're getting good title, assumes that this is all kosher under IRS proceedings. And we have to back up three years though, because we have been here once before. The Stanley Family Foundation, when this was decided upon as a project, we already had our tax documents signed and authorized by the Council back at that time, but it was a different entity. It was the Stanley Family Foundation, planning to donate to the city, but the plan was spelled out in an agreement that included a pass-through. And since that time, the Greater Jefferson County Foundation has been sort of the escrow agent for the charitable gift. So we're finally there. Everything's done. I believe they've probably spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on the improvements over there. Plus, there was about 60,000 that we knew about at the time, shown in the agreement to purchase that corner. And everything's ready to go, in my opinion, as your examining attorney. This was intended, the last thing that would be done before we have a dedication of this. And there's an attachment at the back of your tablets about that dedication. And my information now is it's Wednesday instead of earlier discussions about Tuesday. But we do need to pass this resolution, so the resolution and the deed can be now recorded.
Great, thank you. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone, Rebecca?
No.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Okay, Council, were there any more questions for John? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion?
To accept the dedication deed?
Second.
Acknowledging completion of-
So that was moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy?
Sure.
It was an assist by Gandy.
Okay, any other discussion?
One point, and that is just on the behalf of our Parks Department, to help balance the equation, they've taken on a lot more work over the years, public beach, now this, the nodes downtown that they take care of. It would be nice to take something off their plate at some point, so something to just keep in the back of your head, or maybe explore in one of our committees, some of the less well-used parks that maybe could be let go of. Take that off of their, their maintenance schedule. As, you know, this is, I've been pulling weeds out of the, out of the nodes here at the park and, and trim the trees a little bit. And I know the Parks Department's going to have to do a lot of work there, or some work there. And I appreciate the design was meant to be low maintenance, but low maintenance isn't no maintenance. So just in the spirit of not stressing our Parks Department, I think we should explore some ways we could ease their burden, like I said, to kind of balance the equation a bit. That doesn't take away from the fact this is a beautiful park, a beautiful gift, and will be very well-used.
Appreciate that sentiment. I agree with that. And I have asked Calvin and Pam to put together a list of all the parks, and in their view, what's priority and what's not priority, and then have that, as soon as we have that, to have that discussion at Property Committee. So I, I can appreciate what you're saying there, definitely. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next action item is consideration to accept 9th and Burlington Avenue pedestrian improvements as final. Melanie, or, okay.
What we have before you tonight is the acceptance of the pedestrian improvements on 9th and Burlington. The majority of this work was completed last October, November. We had a couple punchless items that they finally got carried over once the weather turned nice. So we are ready to accept it. As you may recall, $66,000 of this project was paid by T-SIP funds through the DOT. So what we have tonight is accepting the project and releasing the retainer estimate number four for $4,001.
Any questions, Council?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Any other questions? Not, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. Next action item, consideration to award bid for proposed street improvements for 23rd, 9th, and the C Street paving.
All right. So Matt can answer any of the details about the project, but this project was, bids were received a couple weeks ago, and at your last council meeting, I asked that you give us a little bit more time to look at the bids, as well as look at the funding. We do feel that the bids are fair, despite having one bidder. What we have, in, in talking to this contractor, as well as other contractors, supplies of all kinds of materials are becoming short. They are increasing the time, the, the delay in getting materials is an issue. And then also, a little more localized issue is a shortage of fly ash, which, which is part of the concrete mix. And so we think that all of those things, given that this is a lot larger project than Maryland Carpenter, the large, longer timeframe just allows more opportunities for unknowns to pop their head up. And so we believe that that is why the bids are higher than the estimate. So we do still feel like they're fair. Then what you'll see up here is that the total project cost, including engineering and contingency, is around 1.5 million. The following funding sources are expected to be used, and this was discussed in the capital improvements plan with one modification, that we would be looking at bond proceeds paid back through the debt levy, bond proceeds paid back through the West Industrial, TIF. And then the changes, the sidewalk funds, we had originally budgeted around 18,000 to come from the sidewalk funds, so we're asking for just a little bit more. And then the next paragraph, and this is one of the decisions to be made, is whether to include replacing all of the sidewalk on 9th Street. This was discussed when we went to bid for the project. Really, there is not a lot of sidewalk on 9th that is optional. And so we think that for the $3,700 to have good access to our rec center is worth it. And again, because we'll be using the sidewalk funds to pay for it, we think that's a good investment in the area. So staff and French Reniker, we are recommending award 100% of the project's scope to Jones Contracting. Anything you want to add, Matt?
Happy to answer any questions. Did a good job.
Any questions, Council? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Pam? Any other additional questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Pam, Rasmussen?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next action item, consideration to accept Libertyville Road sanitary sewer improvements as final.
So what we have is a couple things before you with this item. One is change order number five, and really what this one does is it's just a quantity adjustment. We wanted to make the contract amount match what was actually used on the project. So for this one, it's actually a deduct of $48,687.18. And the last one is accepting the project. You might remember, you released a portion of the retainage last, I believe, October, November, something like that. There's a little concern making sure the seeding and the settlement was completed. We had to go back in, or Drish had to go back in and do a little bit more seeding to make sure all the property owners were appeased on the north side of Libertyville Road. So what we would like is to do a final quantities and retainage pay estimate and the amount of $30,200 and to accept the project. With Drish Construction.
And we like the savings.
Those are always nice.
That helps. Any questions, Council?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Martha. Moved by Rasmussen?
Second.
Second by Gandy. No additional questions? Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Next action item, consideration of funding agreement with Iowa Department of Transportation for Traffic Safety Improvement Program funding. This is regarding Highway One South and the roundabout at Libertyville Road.
So like 23rd, Ninth and C, we are utilizing multiple funding sources for Highway One. One of those is the Traffic Safety Improvements Program, or T-SIP. It's a grant program through the Iowa Department of Transportation. The city was awarded the maximum amount of 500,000. And that 500,000 will go specifically to the safety-related items, which is at a total of 1.8 million. So even if there are changes during the project, we will still be utilizing all of the grant funds. Other than that, there's nothing special about the agreement, just standard procedure with the Department of Transportation, and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Melanie. Any questions? Construction is what year again?
So we're, later on in the agenda, you have some items related to property values. So the overall schedule is that over the next six months, we'll be acquiring the right-of-way and easements that are needed for the project. Next summer, we'll be seeing, we'll likely be seeing some utility relocation. Some of the poles particularly need to be relocated. And so that would put construction of the roadway in 2023.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Ham. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next action item, consideration of engineering services agreement with McClure for Step Three contingent upon USDA approval.
All right, so I'm going to let Alex explain the engineering services agreement, but I just wanted to remind the group what we have here is, although we're about ready to finish Step Two, we know that we're not done on our sanitary sewer collection improvements. So Step Three starts improvements to the west side of the system, particularly Grease Lightning Lift Station, which is our largest lift station within the system. The Water and Sewer Committee received proposals or statements of qualifications from firms and selected McClure, and now we're at the point of approving a contract. Then after the contract, there were two items related to the wastewater treatment plant that we forgot to put on the agenda for your approval. Alex is going to cover those while he's here, but we won't act on them until your next meeting, so. Alex, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so I think the first item we want to go through is the agreement for Step Three. So just kind of a brief overview of the project's scope, which we've kind of refined over the years here as we've gotten through the first couple of steps in the city's program. But it basically consists of a new wet-weather sewer lift station located adjacent to the existing Grease Lightning Lift Station down on the southwest side of town. The approximate capacity of that lift station is around 14 million gallons a day, which is a pretty big number, about roughly 40% of what the city could see in a peak wet-weather event. Coupled with that, there would be some sort of dry weather pumping, pumping for normal flows that come down the sewer. Some were probably in the three to four million gallon a day range, which is what the existing capacity of the Grease Lightning Lift Station is. Along with the lift station, we're looking at about 1,400 feet of 36-inch diameter sanitary sewer upstream. That takes us from the proposed lift station site across the road, kind of a little bit out of the park. And then on the other end of that is the force main, and there's about 10,250 linear feet of 24-inch diameter force main with the project. That parallels the existing alignment until you get to the hospital. And then as you get kind of toward the hospital and Highway One, we propose to have the force main actually cross the road and then kind of parallel the county trail all the way down to the Step One 54-inch trunk sewer. Purpose of doing that is basically to be able to construct a slightly smaller pipe diameter at a lower depth and save the city some cost. The preliminary cost estimate that we've put together, based on the scope of work that we've worked with staff to refine, is about $10 million for this step. And then in terms of schedule, we're looking at about a 12-month design permitting and possible property acquisition process. So if we're going to start here in June, we're looking at probably bidding the project about a year from now. Given the work that's required, we're planning to split the project up into two prime contracts. One contract would consist of kind of the lift station vertical construction work. The second contract would consist of the horizontal pipework construction. The plan would be to bid those projects simultaneously, knowing that they could be constructed on different schedules and they probably have different timelines to complete. But we believe it's probably going to be about a 15-month construction window, assuming we can get the project bid early next summer or late next spring, depending on how you look at where we are in this point in the year. So what that means is, you know, bid summer 2022, construction would begin then, and ideally we'd have construction wrap up in the fall of 2023 for this project. So that kind of goes through the general scope of the project. We're planning on working with pathfinders to apply for USDA rural development funding for this, as well as possibly apply for some other grants as well. Part of that process is getting a preliminary engineering report completed, so that's number one on our priority list as soon as the contract is approved. And then as we go through design, it's a pretty standard design process. A few different, or a few kind of unique things to this project is there's going to be a fair amount of boundary survey that we're going to have to do along the force main alignment to ensure that the city has proper easement documentation for that pipe. And then we will also be having geotechnical engineering kind of under our scope of work, which is included in the contract. You guys have any questions for me on that?
I didn't think we were doing the gravity portion.
Okay, we can work through that.
Okay.
So.
We'll have to do something.
Yeah.
But.
When you come across Highway One, you go underneath?
Yeah, yeah.
This new paving that they're going to put down, how is that going to coordinate?
Yeah, so we'd be crossing a DOT right-of-way at that point. So that section of the pipe would be constructed with trenchless technology and a steel casing pipe, probably born jack or some sort of other trenchless construction method.
Okay.
So there would be no pavement disruption at that point.
Yeah, that's what I just wondered, how that was going to coordinate.
Yep.
So I would whether we approve the engineering services agreement with McClure for Step Three contingent upon USDA approval.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Thank you, approved unanimously.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your business, and are looking forward to delivering the next project for you guys.
Thank you. Next action.
I guess you want to consider, have we covered the other two items now at this point?
Yes.
Okay. So are we starting with the substantial completion?
Jason, would you open the wastewater treatment update? Yes.
Where do I go? This is fine for now, if everyone has a copy of this. So you may recall, last year, we added a fair amount of scope to the wastewater plant project, which is the main reason why the project is not done and closed out at this point. What that consisted of was replacement of the two existing final clarifiers, some additional improvements to the sludge-holding tank, and then some troubleshooting with the sludge-transfer pumps. All of that system is kind of tied together. So what we did about a year ago was work through the substantial completion process for all of the work except this portion of the work. It was brought to our attention from USDA that we had never taken this in front of counsel when we did our 11-month walkthrough on the previous section, so we decided that we should probably bring it before you for approval. But this portion of the work was substantially complete back in late January of 2021. So at this point, basically, everything at the treatment plant is substantially complete, ready for continuous use, which is what your staff has been doing. There are about a dozen punchless items on the project that have yet to be completed. The majority of them relate to controls and the SCADA system and the programming of that system that we were working through with the contractor, a couple different subcontractors and suppliers, because all of the integration that's required between the equipment, the computers, and the electrical wiring. But we hope to have that done here in the next couple of months and get the project officially closed out in the retainer release. But at this point, we would just want you to approve substantial completion.
And I'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Yeah, and Melanie will bring it up at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Scroll down a little bit more, Jason.
Yep. Yeah, the punch list would be on the next couple of pages, you know, keep scrolling down to the next portion. Okay. Yeah, it's like three pages, I think. Keep going. Two more. Next page. Okay. And then the second item that Melanie's going to bring at the next meeting is amendment number three to our existing engineering agreement for the wastewater plant. So over the past couple of months, we've been working with staff and with the USDA to determine additional uses for the remaining grant funding on the wastewater plant project. So we have put together a very comprehensive list of many things that we could do at the plant, including equipment and additional improvements to structures and the like. And we settled on something that we looked at a couple of years ago, which is replacement of aerobic digester number one. That tank was originally built in 2012, so it's about, I guess it's nine years old going on 10 years old. When we did the renovation work in that tank back in 2019, it was determined that there was excessive corrosion for the age of the tank. And there's some speculations to why that happened by a few suppliers. We got a price to get it repaired. At the time, we thought that price was not competitive, and we were under the impression at that time that the city was kind of tight on budget, because this was before we determined we had some accounting mix-ups. Yeah. So we ultimately elected not to change order, replacement of that tank into the project at the time. However, after kind of getting to this point in the project and realizing we were at the budget, we thought it would be a prodigious use of the remaining grant funds to include replacement of that tank.
When you say there is some speculation as to why the unexpected corrosion?
Yeah, yeah. So there, the supplier suggested that all of the corrosion was caused by dissimilar metals, basically stainless steel coming into carbon steel in the tank. We did our own inspection, and we believe that, yes, there was some of that. But I think another reason was that the cathodic protection system, basically zinc anodes in the bottom of the tank were undersized for the tank and kind of, because corrosion has been experienced not just where the pipe and the metal, or the pipe and the tank wall come together, but kind of all throughout the tank. So as part of this project and part of the supply of the new tank, cathodic protection is a big, a big design consideration, and something we want to make sure is sized appropriately, because it is a, it's a corrosive environment with wastewater sludge in that tank. So the first part of this is to basically design and bid out replacement of the tank. We have to publicly bid the project because it's going to exceed, exceed the thresholds for Iowa bidding law. Basically, we consist of tearing down the tank, replacing all the side panels, and then connecting all of the dome of the tank, the walkway, all the pipes, and all the mixing equipment inside back to the new tank panels. So that's, that's the first portion of the work that's covered. The second portion of work that's covered is a lighting study, a site lighting study. So as we, as we started up the front half of the wastewater plant, there are a couple areas in the plant that are a little lackluster with the amount of light that's provided. Makes it kind of hazardous for the operators, particularly the Influent and Stormwater Pumping Building. Not sure if any of you have been there, but it's about two floors of steps down some quickly rotating steel screws. You can see, but not very well. So this study is going to be an evaluation of kind of the light that's produced, based on what was installed. Look for areas that we can maybe supplement light, particularly in this area, and then around the Headworks Building, which is the adjacent structure. And then probably based on the price, hopefully just go out for quotes and have a local contractor provide some enhanced lighting around that portion of the structure. So any, any questions on that information?
I'm sorry, were you saying that's an either/or, or you're saying both?
No, it's a both thing.
Okay.
Yeah, so the first portion would be the tank, tank replacement. The second portion is the lighting study, they're just kind of separate scope items.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. All righty, now we can move on to the next thing.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you. Next action item, in consideration of the Greater Jefferson County Foundation grant request, application for Central Park tables. Michael?
So the Central Park Table project is nearing fundraising completion. We did do a grant request last year for the Greater Jefferson County Foundation, and they, they gave 100% of what was asked for, which is just under 20,000, which purchased all eight tables. They're in storage at the Public Works Department, awaiting installation. Lookwashman Sales Tax, 7,500 will become available in July. $2,500 was donated by Everybody's Whole Foods and Fairfield Hy-Vee, and some additional funds were raised, totaling about 15,000. It's what we have, or will have in July. And that's the low bid for the construction installation. So we're left with one final expense, and that's purchasing the brick pavers. So we could proceed with the project and just put in sidewalk and not put in brick pavers, but everyone who's, all the organizations who have seen the design layout preferred the layout with the pavers, just because it kind of pulls in the look of the downtown a little better. So what we're left with is initial bid, or a quote for the pavers last year, 5,300. Gas prices went up, it went to 55, and now it's at just under 6,000. That's what the current freight charge is, because as you can imagine, that's a lot of weight. And so when gas prices go up, so we've got a very current, as of last week, quote for all the pavers with shipping at just under $5,995, which is the request that we would then make to the Greater Jefferson County Foundation. And as a member of the Foundation Board said to me, what's the worst that could happen? They say no. And the project can go in without the pavers. So this isn't going to necessarily keep the project from moving forward, it's just that it would allow it to move forward in its original scope, which included the pavers that match the pavers all around the downtown. That's basically what this would be, just submit a grant request, just like we did last year, and find out in July, I believe, if it's approved.
Installation done by?
By fall. I mean, it's, yeah.
Parking, parking record?
So we got two quotes from two different contractors who work with concrete, and that'll come at a future meeting where we can accept the low bid on that. And then to keep the price down, we opted to have volunteers actually lay the brick pavers. So you'll see me out there, you might see Melanie down on her hands and knees putting in the pavers, and then they'll do the cuts that are required, but most of them don't need to be cut. And the particular contractor who came in low, I won't say brags, but I'll say is very confident that they can put in a slab so flat that you can put the pavers in without sand and it'll, it'll be even. So I thought, oh, I got to see that. So, yeah, so we know all the prices now. We've got enough, like I said, to install them if we just wanted to put in concrete under them. But it doesn't hurt to ask. Greater Jefferson, Jefferson County Foundation has been very gracious, been a great partner with the city, supported many projects. And one of the questions they ask is how many people will this potentially serve? And maybe the reason they gave that full amount last year is because this is a public park, it's one of our most popular parks, and it's open to everyone. So all citizens of Fairfield, all citizens of Jefferson County, any visitor will be able to come. And the tables that are there function fine, but they're not quite the same level of class the rest of the park, the rest of the downtown. So I think people really appreciate the tables that match the benches and the pavers that match the rest of the pavers. Plus, there'll be more seats when these are installed, so there'll actually be more room and two ADA-accessible tables. So if someone's in a wheelchair and they want to come up, they can access them, which currently is not the case with the tables under the pine trees.
Thank you. We'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant request.
Moved by Tuhill?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen? Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. The next resolution, consideration to approve use of compensation estimate policy, Melanie?
All right, the next two items are related to purchase of right-of-way and easements on Highway One. The city has a policy that's allowed by state law to use compensation estimates when determining land values when the estimated purchase is less than $10,000. And so several of the properties along Highway One fit within this. And so on Attachment A, Jason, if you would open that up and scroll down a little bit. What your, first item that you're approving is the use of the compensation estimate policy. Then the second item is related to, you're actually approving the land values. And the land values were established, some of the properties were done, had appraisals done on them. Several of these properties are related to the city somehow, and so. Several of these properties are related to the city somehow, and so we, we chose to do appraisals on all of those properties that have relationships with the city. And then those appraisals were used to establish the costs or the estimate for the other properties. On the residential properties, you're looking at between 95 cents and a dollar 10 per square foot, and on the commercial properties, you're looking at 210 to 225. I would ask that we exclude parcel number 22 from the, from the list. We believe that the $2.50 a square foot is a typo, but the JCG wants to look at that a little bit more. We were looking at it at the last minute and he couldn't, we didn't have a good answer. So we would recommend approval of the compensation estimate policy, which is the first item.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve.
Okay, thank you Martha.
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Gandy. Other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I did forget to mention that you're just approving the land values tonight. There will be other items that are taken into consideration during the negotiation, that's the landscaping, whether a driveway is torn up, and, and various features that would be on top of the land value. And so once, once JCG has shown them the land prices, then they'll work on negotiating the remainder of the things. And after JCG has completed that full negotiation, the final cost of each parcel will come to you as a resolution separately. So again, we're just doing the land tonight, so I would recommend approval of establishing just compensation values prior to start of negotiations excluding parcel 22.
Some, some moves?
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Alrighty, under the mayor's report, I have a few things before I get to our Arbor Committee appointment. First of all, I want to thank Alex Stanley for Petrus Park, it's a beautiful, a beautiful park. I drove by there today and it's going to be a beautiful addition to the city, and what a beautiful tribute to your wife. So we thank you very much for that, and we look forward to that ribbon cutting. Trail Volunteer Day is June 5th. They're going to have two shifts, one from 8:30 to 12:30, and a second shift from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. That's to help spruce up the trails, and so we hope you'll participate. There is a signup sheet, and I think, well, I posted it on the, on Facebook, on the mayor's page, and I think we were posting it on the city's Facebook as well, right? So we hope people come and help us clean the trail up. Couple weeks ago, there was an emergency management meeting, and one of the discussion points is that we need to raise probably some additional funds for a bigger budget. For many years, probably 20-plus years, we've been doing a per capita assessment and giving that to the emergency management, as well as the county does the same thing. Brett, you know, Farrell is our emergency management coordinator, he has not had a race in four years, and we think he deserves one. And we also really don't have emergency funds for ongoing maintenance items and things that, pieces of equipment that we may need. So we're going to be looking at how to direct some more funds there. It could be that we, you know, increase the per capita. It could be that, it could be a levy that does not have to be voted on. We don't know what that looks like, but it would be a small levy. One thing that was bad around was three to four cents, and so raising somewhere between 40 and 50,000, we'll see how that comes out, or maybe some combination of the two. So we're going to be working that over the next couple of months. Our next meeting will be in July, and hopefully we'll have some more information around that time. So, but this would be for the following year, so. Last thing is that we have another board appointment for the Arbor Committee, and thank Michael for bringing Cassidy Robinson to the floor, and do you want to say anything about her?
Well, she's Ray Lynn's replacement as our DNR District Forester. So this is her full-time gig, and as you can see in her resume, she's got chainsaw use experience and can climb trees and ID them. She basically, what she wrote was almost completely in step with what the Arbor Committee is about, so she's essentially the perfect candidate to be on there.
Great, thank you. I think she's a good candidate, and I appreciate you bringing her to the, to our attention. So if I could entertain a motion to approve her for the Arbor Committee, I appreciate it. Move by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion passed. And we will move on to city attorney report. John, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay, great, thank you. Committee and board reports, environmental and franchise, we'll start there.
Right, so we met on Mon, Wednesday, the 19th, and we discussed three items. First recommendation from the committee is to raise the solid waste recycling rates from the current amount of $12.50 to $13.12, is that what we figured?
Yes.
So is there, we made a calculation error on Wednesday night, and we had come up with 13.
31.
31, but really when we checked it, 1312 is an
Correct.
appropriate amount. So the committee would accept that amendment to the minutes. That was a clerical error.
By me, I did it.
So we're asking council to, now, those monies will not only meet our obligation to waste management, we could bill it, I think, 1271 a month per account now.
Yes.
And will be rising to $13 per month in July.
I think you're correct.
And so the extra 31 cents will help the general fund by paying the salary of individual who works on billing for the wa, solid waste and recycling.
Billing, solid handling questions for a general
Clerical work and phone work and that kind of thing.
Is it 31 cents actually?
60.
Waste management is raising it to $13, right?
Right.
But we're only raising, didn't you say that we just changed this to 13?
12.
12?
Did I say 31?
Yeah, so it's an extra 12 cents, right?
An extra 12 cents, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we get approval from council, then we'll go back and rewrite the ordinance and bring it to council for three readings.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You want a motion on that?
I, I think so.
To take it to the ordinance? Okay, gotcha.
So moved.
Okay, move by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Rebecca, please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Okay, in regard to the sustainability coordinator proposal, so the money that we have in the solid waste fund is about $203,000, and the committee would agree to recommend to council $15,000 of those funds would be used to pay the salary for the first year of a sustainability coordinator, or one-third of the agreement with MIU and with the county, provided that that one-third of the job description is consistent with use of those funds, meaning those funds are collected by billing for recycling and solid waste pickup. So the, the job description would have to include one-third of that person's time working on those projects. Because we're not allowed to use that money in any other fashion except in a way that reinforces the enterprise that resulted in that surplus.
So like landfill diversion, composting?
Business recycling, education, Ronald?
Correct, one of those four tenants that Sierra Club brought to us for the, which was reduction of solid waste. And so that's one of the main focuses of the cities. Since we're using these funds, and it's an enterprise fund, we have to use it towards something like that.
Educating people to improve the recycling stream so it's more consistent with what waste management wants, calling out items that might be able to go to goodwill or to the restore that aren't going there, that it should be maybe, stuff like that.
Yep, all good things.
And clarification, Doug, this is for one year?
One year. And I, I told the committee this is just to get things started, and then we'll look at it, you know, at the county, the MIU going on with us, then look at it again next year.
Okay, thank you.
But again, like I said, you know, it's a little hard to say now whether that would generate three years of work for a person. So we could, you know, let's say it goes down to half their time that they're spending now on solid waste and recycling, then we could spend 7,500 out of this fund, and then find 7,500 from another source that would allow us to free up that person's time to do other tasks that are consistent with what the plan is.
So is that your official motion, Doug?
Yeah, as written here, to allocate $15,000 from the solid waste fund to pay one-third of the salary of the sustainability coordinator, consistent with use of those funds as approved by an auditor, for example.
Great, thank you.
Same motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yeah.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you, approved.
Okay, last item here, I asked the committee to add this cell tower ordinance discussion onto the agenda. So as you probably recall, a year over, 2019, AT&amp;T wanted to put a cell tower up, South Ninth Street or Seventh.
Oh, yeah.
The same location as, as currently being proposed.
Yeah.
So in this winter, I got a few emails about it. So an ordinance was written by some citizens, and they brought it to us for consideration, and the committee is asking council to open that up, let us, let the committee take a look at that, recommendations, call all of it, information that we think we could find useful in our existing ordinances, then come back to full council with recommendations.
Move to accept environmental and franchise utilities committee recommendation regarding cell tower ordinance drafted by citizens.
Okay, move by Gandy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Doug?
That's it.
Okay. Public Safety and Transportation?
Public Safety met after the environmental franchise. We reviewed a number of code sections. One of the sections is the animal control area in regard to defining dangerous dogs or dangerous animals. We'd like the council to review the old policy and the new, look at the new policy to see if the new policy is acceptable at this point. The committee was not comfortable defining specific breeds as dangerous without them showing to be dangerous. So I believe, if I'm not correct, or I believe what they chose to do is leave it as written at this point, providing there was no concern from the rest of the council. Is that correct?
You mean leave it as updated or as previously written?
As updated.
Okay.
I think it's good.
Okay. That's what Public Safety did. So obviously the council will have an opportunity to review the, review the new ordinances when it comes back, but would like a request to review it, and then if you have any suggestions or concerns, get with your other county committee members that are on Public Safety to revisit that ordinance if you feel needed.
You want a date by which them to do this?
ASAP. We're meet, we're, we're again meeting Wednesday this week again to review more sections. So if you could, it's only one, one or two sections for the animal control, so if you could look at those sections and get back with Katie or Paul or Martha, that would be great.
Great, okay, thank you. Ways and Means?
Thank you, Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met this after, this evening at 6:15 approximately, and present at the meeting were myself, Ways Chair Doug Flornoy, Ways and, Ways and Means Member, Aaron Koyker, City Administrator, Melanie Carlson, City Engineer, Rebecca Loper, City Clerk, Calvin Todd, Park and Recs Director, our mayor, Katie Anderson was absent, one of the members of the committee, and John Morrissey, our City Attorney, appeared a little bit later on in the meeting. This is a meeting call of the suggestion of our City Administrator, City Clerk, and City Engineer regarding proposed refunding, and it was, we listened very carefully to the, to the description given, and explanation given by Aaron and Melanie and Rebecca, and luckily we have a professor of chemistry on our committee, Doug Flornoy, who's broken it down in a way that even I can understand it, I think. So we're going to ask, Doug, if you don't mind, telling what we're doing here, we're trying to, well, well, Doug will explain it.
All right, so we have SURF funding that will support, if you ship it on that list, there are items four, five, and six? Well, currently they're, they're scheduled to you, to pay for four, five, and six. Because of the high bid for 23rd, Ninth, and C Street, the bonding package that we were using, we were hoping that we would be able to fit seven and eight into the bonding package. That's not going to happen, so we have to use some other sources to fund all the projects that we're looking for. SURF is a capital improvements reserve fund, which typically, or historically, has been used specifically for streets. Road use tax has to be used for any of the street projects that we have in, or has to be specific for street projects. So what we've been doing, or what we've been trying to do is put four, five, and six into road use projects so that we can use SURF dollars for seven and eight. And the city funds right now, we have a balance in our, or an unobligated balance of about a million dollars in road use tax, which has been growing over the last four or five years. So we would like to put the projects that were in SURF into the unobligated road use tax funds, and then use some SURF money to pay for the maintenance shop and the airport snow removal equipment.
The city has a number of different accounts, we all know that.
Yeah.
And they're all legitimate accounts, and we legitimately need to move some money to its different accounts to fund certain projects, because there are certain, there were deficits in some areas and surpluses in another. Is that right?
Well, provide, yes. Providing that obviously they meet legal standards to use.
Right.
For example, road use tax can only be used for road use. SURF is a broad, a broad definition to be utilized.
Right.
So, but historically it's been specifically streets. Other, other pots of money for road use is also local option sales tax. Half of our local option sales tax, because of the way we passed it in the referendum, goes specifically towards street projects. The other part goes to community better, better, and city projects, or to reduce property taxes. So, yes, the Streets Department has a number of different funds. We've got a, a good, healthy balance in road use tax at this time. So the city is requesting that we approve the changes in the funding and the projects available so that we can get projects accomplished that have, particularly the Parks Maintenance Shop and the airport equipment has been kind of put off for a number of years, and it, and this was, if bids would have come in normally, this would have been a great year to do that, but because we have some fund balances, this, we'll still be able to do this and not put any future projects that may depend on some of those fund balances in jeopardy.
we'll be able to get more things done?
Correct.
Sorry, Mr. Flornoy. You gave the explanation that I understood. So did he.
So we're doing, we're not shifting all the SURF funds out, just enough to cover seven and eight. There'll still be some remaining SURFs left, money left in four, five, and six?
I don't know exactly for sure if that's completely the whole truth or the, nothing but, but essentially something to that effect.
And then whatever shortage that we have for the road projects, we'll get them out of the RUT, the Road Utilization Tax.
The Road Use Tax Fund balances that are unobligated balances.
We should tell people that there's 1.25 million in there?
I don't know if it's quite 1.0. It is 1.2, but I don't know if it's 1.25.
Okay, 1.2 million in the road use tax, and that money has not been dipped into in over five years?
Correct. We haven't done that.
So it's a surplus that's unobligated at that point?
Correct.
It's got a purpose, though. It's being saved for a reason, and that is Burlington Avenue is now a city street, no longer a DOT highway. So we were saving that up, because someday, we're going to have to repave all that street that we didn't used to have to do. So if we're pulling out of that, I'm not thrilled about it, but it doesn't look like it's that much, because there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar expected surplus in the fiscal year '21 road use tax. Is that what I'm reading here?
Yes.
So was that the expected decline that we thought COVID would bring about that didn't?
Correct. There was actually, there's also some federal government money that was
Put in there?
Aid money put in there that it actually was more money than what we anticipated this year, yes. And we were also conservative with our estimates when we budgeted, so.
Yeah.
And the other purpose of that money is to do a bridge interim financing for Highway One?
Yep.
Which might be in the order of 400,000?
Correct. But that's interim financing, so that will get repaid back when we do the financing for Highway One. But we need the money to interim finance that, yes.
So can anyone say, with all these numbers, what amount is coming out of the unobligated road use tax reserve, not from this year's budget? I can't figure it out.
I can't either.
I need a protractor or an abacus or something.
I can't give you an exact number, but it is approximately that 255,000 that we're using in the bond for seven and eight.
Could we make the motion to not more than 300,000?
Yes. That would be fine.
So I'd make the motion not more than 300,000 of road use tax money be utilized to meet these obligations.
I'll second it. I think we should.
Okay. What was the recommendation of the committee? Let's go back to that. What was the recommendation?
To approve the projects with the changes in funding.
We don't know the exact amount, so.
Okay, so you want to amend, so that was going to be, we haven't made a recommendation yet. So we, so what you're suggesting is a recommendation of the committee, is that correct?
I guess, yes.
Yeah, okay.
With, with the caveat of not to spend more than 300,000 dollars of
It's a cap.
Unobligated road use tax.
A cap, a cap.
He thinks it's going to be less than that, but just to be sure.
And we don't have enough information to determine exactly what the amount's going to be, not yet. But we will.
Correct.
How quickly do we reaccumulate that again?
Well, over five years, in 2016, we had a balance of 300,000 dollars in road use tax. That was in 2016. We currently have 1.2. So we've increased that balance considerably fairly quick.
But with 150,000 dollar surplus projected for next year?
This year.
This year. Then maybe in two years, we'd have this money back. Where it is today?
Could.
Okay. The motion, the way I understand it, is to approve these projects with the funding suggested, but with a cap of 300,000 from, from the road use.
Road use tax.
Okay, and it was seconded by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? No, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
No.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved, five to one. Thank you. Next up is Water and Sewer Utilities.
We met tonight at 6:45 prior to the council meeting. We had one item on our agenda that we wanted to bring to council, and it was a request from the Jefferson County Kids Childcare Center to waive the connection fee for the, for the new childcare center. So we agreed to make a motion to council to waive a one-time new construction fee, not to exceed 5,000 dollars. We had an estimate, it may be around 2,500 roughly, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't include discounts on billing or anything like that. It's just a, we're just going to waive the one-time connection, or recommend to waive the one-time connection fee.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes.
You're making that a motion. Okay, it's moved by Toohill. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion?
Well, just a little more discussion. We, we felt this project was unique in that it's done by a nonprofit for something our community needs. So we don't want to open up the floodgates that anybody doing a development come along and ask for a waive just because it's a development. This is an important project that we haven't, city hasn't contributed, contributed to in any meaningful way. So in this case, we felt that this was appropriate.
Great, thank you. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to waive this fee for the, connection fee for the community childcare. Any other discussion? No, please call a roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. Do you have anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, Fire Station Task Force report.
Since Katie's not here, I'll give the report. The Fire Station Task Force met for their first meeting last week. Most of the members were able to attend. This was a meeting to introduce the committee members to the current situation, get them familiar with the, the work that has been done up to this point, including the capital improvements planning that we, that we do every year, and then the five sites that were reviewed by Klingner. We talked, we discussed that with the committee. The committee will be making, eventually will be making a recommendation to council regarding one of the two sites, the existing site and the DOT, or the DOT site. So they did elect a chair and a vice chair in order to have those proceedings of making a recommendation. Then also, the committee, Klingner walked the committee through some of the decisions and thought processes that are going to be made in the next couple meetings, such as the vehicle bay requirements, the laundry requirements, the living quarter needs, and then other support spaces. And I think at that point, and Scott and Aaron can, can chime in, but it really brought it to a personal level for the committee members. They could see where our fire personnel can benefit, where the community can benefit, and why we need to be discussing these, whether it's in the form of a remodel or a new building, that they could really see some of the required improvements. So other than the chair and vice chair, there were no decisions made at the meeting. The next meeting will be a tour of the existing station and the DOT buildings, so there probably won't be a very large report for that. And then the following meeting, they will start to discuss some of the building sizes, and hopefully, at the end of the third meeting, they have a recommendation for the council regarding those two sites. We'll bring that back to the council, allow Klingner an opportunity to discuss with you guys a little bit more so that we can proceed on more detailed designs after we pick a site.
Melanie, if they could take a field trip and go over to Washington, since they have a brand-new fire station, it's pretty cool. You could talk to them also and ask them questions, since they've had it now for, I'm not sure, a year or so. If there's anything they would have done different, any little tweaks they would have done, but I got a tour a few months ago, I don't know, last fall, I can't remember when it was. It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
So, good place to go see a brand-new fire station. I'm sure they'd love to show it off.
That's all I have on the fire station.
They have a huge kitchen over there, by the way, if you know that.
And I think we have, I think we have a microwave cart, I think, is the extent that we have in ours. So my dorm had better facilities.
Yeah. They have a huge kitchen where they do fundraisers and flip pancakes and, anyway. So, okay, great, thank you. Anything else for committees? That's all we have here. Okay, Administrator and Department reports?
All right, on the project update, we've talked about all the projects tonight practically. The city crews are continuing to work on replacing water main on Morgan Street between Burlington and Broadway. The rain has, the rain over the last 10 days have really slowed down all of the projects. Step two is getting close to their completion date, which we will probably not meet because of the last two weeks have just put a hold on things, and we're still looking at another week of rain, and by the time that dries out, it will be 90 degrees and we won't get any grass growing. So there will be work needed on step two in this, this fall. Then on Fourth Street and Thirty-second Street, I've had a lot of people ask, when is Fourth Street going to start? This project was let through the DOT, and the way they have their contracts is they have a late start date, so the contractor, if he does not, he or she does not start by that date, they can incur penalties. So the lead start date for Fourth Street is August 9th of 2021. I do not have a schedule on when they plan on being here, but we should be seeing it by that time. Thirty-second has a late start date of September 13th of 2021.
If the contractor rolls in and like breaks out a little piece of chunk of existing street and then is gone for a month, does that count?
Well, they only have 30 days once they start.
Okay, so they have to start and then complete the work?
Yes.
They can't pull that game where they just?
Exactly. Yep. And so in DOT, I think it's 30, one of the projects has 30 days and one of the projects has 50 days. I don't remember which one's which, but one of the benefits of asphalt is a relative quick turnaround compared to concrete, which brings us to Merrill and Carpenter. Merrill has been repaved and is in good shape, but Carpenter was, the concrete was removed before we got the rain over the last two weeks. So there is going to be quite some time before we have the concrete on that street. Many of the property owners have access through alleys, but it's unfortunate that it was completely torn up when the rain hit. We did have a sanitary sewer lateral that was discovered on Merrill. Unfortunately, we had to dig up a part of the brand-new street in order to fix it. But once public safety is done going through the codification, we will definitely discuss right-of-way permits in more detail. Sewer laterals should not be that shallow, but we currently do not have any code otherwise. So we will be working on that in the future. And then lastly, I'm getting ready to send out a bid package for the electric vehicle charging stations, so I would ask the council for approval to close up to six spaces in the public parking lot while the contractor is working, and then three parking spaces overnight. So six, open three of them back up for the evening crowd, and, and then only have three overnight. So I would request those, closing of those parking spaces.
Melanie, is this the lot behind the Civic Center, or is it the lot to the west of Gammerstow?
To the west of Gammerstow.
I'll approve the temporary closing of the six spaces for construction of the, or installation of the EV charger.
Moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carried.
Okay, and then the next request of parking space closure that I have is for two parking spaces on the east side of Petrus Park. Again, due to the rain, we are holding the ribbon cutting on Wednesday rather than Tuesday, but I'd like two spaces in front of that east entrance so that media and the photographers can set up there and be able to get a good shot of the ribbon cutting over the east entrance.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carried. I, oh, yeah, go ahead, Aaron, sorry.
Yeah, in the last couple of weeks, I, I have attended a, at least one Rotary meeting. I don't remember if it was two. There's four every week, but, or every month. I've been to a Qantas meeting, and then this past week, the mayor and I did do a presentation to the Manufacturers Association. We talked about comprehensive plan, projects that we were looking at here for this next year, along with some completion of projects here this past year. We did have a brief discussion of a little bit about building permit, or building codes again. So we've had a little bit more discussion. Obviously, there's more further to discuss and move forward.
This, this is at the spec building?
Yeah, this was at the spec building.
How was it turnout?
The spec building is in good shape. I do know that there is actually somebody actively talking to our Economic Development Director about possibly purchasing it. I don't know if they've got that far, but it's one of the more promising leads we've had in a while with the spec building. So hopefully, that will work out well.
How was attendance?
I thought it was good. You know, we had a big horseshoe, I don't know, 30 people?
Yeah-ish. Obviously, the main manufacturers were there, Dexter, Traffics, Agroplastics, The Foundry.
Were many of the same manufacturers who were present at the meeting we had here to the presentation, the FMA, about building code? Were they present?
I would say it was a mix. Some, some of those people were there, but there were, I would say, more, there were more people there at the luncheon.
And then the last thing I have, with the relaxation of the social distancing, mask mandates, stuff like that, do we want to go back to our normal council structure, or I shouldn't say normal, what we used to do?
Seating arrangements?
Seating arrangements and open up kind of more to the general public as we were, or continue this way for the near future, or continue this way for a while?
I would suggest that we continue this way for a while. We just, there's just a change now in terms of masks in the council chambers. I would suggest we probably want to continue this for, I don't know, 30, 60 days, see how things flow, then we could, how they work out, and perhaps, perhaps change it at that point. That's my thought, just looking at it.
I miss sitting up in my normal spot.
I, I would like to see more of the general public allowed back in, too.
I mean, we've all had the chance to be vaccinated if we wanted to by now. So I'm okay going back, say, in July, first meeting in July.
That would give us another thirty, some days.
I don't care. I mean, you know.
I mean, I've been wearing my mask mostly because we sit close to each other.
We've gotten so used to being seated in this manner.
I like looking at you guys, but I miss looking at the person talking. I feel like I'm like giving them a cold shoulder when I'm not, I don't need to, but.
I'm fine with going back immediately, or waiting until July, doesn't matter to me.
Why don't we plan for July 1, and of course, that can be diverted if we need to, if things go backwards. And that gives us a little more, a little more cushion here also, and sounds good. Okay?
We'll take care of that for the first meeting in July.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Moved by Toohill.
Second.
Second. Second by Gandy.
We don't leave, I guess.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you.